Mayor Rowan Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Here.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Finchem.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Regular session, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the minutes of the previous meeting for November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Proclaimations and recognition of citizens by the mayor, which I don't have an official recognition tonight, but as I said earlier at our annual Christmas dinner, I would like to thank all of our city employees for the work they've done this year as we complete another year. All the support that we have given to us and this council is greatly appreciated, and I thank you very much. Item five is communications from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I have on my agenda is just to point out that we recently had a small business Saturday downtown. It's something that Gary has put together and worked with the Chamber and some others to try bringing some closing off the street downtown, across the street, bring in some food trucks and have some vendors, and it was a big success. And we're looking at making that a regular thing. It's just trying to figure, do we want to do it? I think he talked about maybe quarterly, and I said maybe monthly, so we're still trying to figure out which way we want to go with that, but that was a big success. And down the road, I think it'll be even better when we get the streetscapes programs done down there, because that's on the streets that we're looking at doing the major renovations, too, that will change the look of the street and make it more appealing to the public and to the vendors. We also had the Christmas parade. Again, we did the Christmas, kind of Christmas in the city part, doing it at night, getting a lot of the downtown businesses to open, to have things going on inside and outside their businesses. Had a great turnout from the public, had a lot of good response from folks that participated, the businesses, and so we've already started talking about how we can make it better next year. So that was another great success. The only other thing, and I thought about mentioning it now or later, but I'm going to go ahead and mention it now, just in case. The swearing-in of the new police chief, which is on the agenda tonight for the appointment, but the swearing-in ceremony will be January the second, which is Tuesday at nine a.m. So the new chief will work with Maurice for two weeks, and then at midnight on Maurice's last day, at twelve oh one a.m., they will officially take office. And so, but the actual swearing-in will be on January the second at nine a.m. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Excuse me. Item six is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees, of which item A is discussion of reappointment to the Newport Fire Civil Service Board, Mr. Jason Christman, and this appointment is by, from the fire department. What's the board's pleasure?
Well, there's, yeah. Yeah, it's just an announcement.
Just an announcement?
Yes, sir.
No discussion, all right. Item seven is reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Anyone wish to be heard from council? Hearing none. We had old unfinished business, of which there is none tonight. Item nine is new business. And item A is consideration of police chief appointment.
Mayor, I move that we appoint Deputy Chief Scott Lamb to that position.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion on the board for consideration of police chief appointment, Mr. Scott Lamb. It has been properly seconded. Roll call, vote please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
I have struggled with this vote and struggled at this point. I will say I support whoever gets the position. I'd also offer a free piece of advice, be careful what you wish for, it's a tough job. But having said that, I am previously committed to another candidate, and I will not go back on my word. At the end of the day, we are seated in this position, your word is all you have, and I will not compromise on that, so therefore my vote is no.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Count four to one. It is confirmed. Our new police chief is Mr. Scott Lamb.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
On his way up there, Mayor, let me say, as Mr. Hansel said, there was lost sleep over this. Seven of our friends wanted this position. And by my previous position, I know how hard it is sometimes to disappoint your friends, but we could only go with one, and we felt, I felt anyway, that's why I made the motion. I felt that this was the way to go. And as Mr. Hansel said, if it had went another way, I promise, I would have supported fully whoever that may be, and I do the police department, and I thank you. Y'all know most of y'all worked with you on the streets. Thank you.
We had some fantastic applicants, absolutely fantastic. And I will say for me, this has been the most lost sleep for me.
It was.
And you're going to do a fantastic job.
I appreciate it, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the rest of the Newport Police Department. We want to move forward from here. And I appreciate the seven other applicants, as well as everybody else in the police department, and we're here to work together as a team for the citizens of Newport. It's going to take each and every one of us, and just like I've worked for my 25 years to represent the Newport Police Department and work hard for this city, and we will look forward to making y'all proud. And that's our plan, and I hope that we'll all work towards that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item B is consideration of first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
Mayor, that's ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, an ordinance amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three.
Heard the reading of the ordinance. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, budget amendment for the city of Newport. It has been properly seconded. Please, roll call, vote please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item C is consideration of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh nine, master agreement, Sourcewell Cooperative Agreement for Swift Water Rescue Loose Equipment.
Yeah, this resolution goes back to our Swift Water Rescue Grant, and it's got a bunch of different loose items on it, probably like twenty-eight, thirty different items. I think it's going to about $60,000 or something. This is all paid for in the grant. This is just a step we have to go through so we're able to purchase these items. I've got the prices and the quotes for it, and this is what the Community Block Development Grant people are asking for us to do.
Heard the resolution. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh nine, master agreement, Sourcewell Cooperative Agreement for Swift Water Rescue Loose Equipment. Say that fast three times. What's the board's pleasure? We need a vote, please. Do we have a roll call? No, just need a voice vote. Voice vote, please.
Thank you.
All right, now, item D, consideration of letter of credit for Newport Utilities.
Good afternoon.
Before you start, let me say that we, each year, we, I guess we're on the agenda to do this, and each year, for the last couple of years, we've had an issue with our audit. We are, we're going to need some kind of consideration or assurances that this audit will be done in a timely fashion this year. As you know, last year, we received a very difficult piece of correspondence from the comptroller with some pretty dire consequences if we didn't get this audited on time. Can you give us tonight some assurance that this is not going to happen this year?
I can tell you, I did reach out to our auditors today to get a status update of a timeline for us, and I was told that it should be completed before Christmas, before the Christmas holiday for this year. Last year's was late, and we do apologize for that, but it was the first year of going with this new audit group. That was what really drove that deadline to be so far back last year. Plus, we had other issues going on with the utilities involving investigations and things of that nature that put us behind, but we're in agreement. We don't want to be late on anything as well. We've turned everything over to our audit group, and they are finalizing it. Should be, from what I was told today, it should be next week. They're planning on having that done before the Christmas holiday. When we had started the process, they had told me December thirty-first was their deadline. So we are, that was our goal with them, so we are planning on having that done prior to Christmas. And I had spoken with Tina earlier this afternoon as well.
Who's the new auditor?
Pugh and Company out of Norfolk.
I thought they'd been there for a while.
No, last year was our first year with them.
Because I thought, who did they go to when they switched from Brown, Jake, and McDaniel?
We were with Rodifer Moss for a few years after that.
Okay, for some reason, I guess I was confused. I thought it'd been Pugh for a while.
No, and I don't know all the details of what happened, but there was a lot of things that Pugh didn't have that we had to go searching for and digging through files on debt documents from, you know, because you take out debt documents that are, you know, 20 years old, and you're having to go back before we had them scanned into the computer and things like that. It wasn't a quick, easy search and pull and send it off to them. It was a lot of digging through file boxes and getting copies to them. So that's really what drove it being so late last year.
So what made the decision to go with Pugh as opposed to the previous auditor that we were working so well with at Brown, Jake? Was it Brown, Jake, and McDaniel?
I can't speak to that, sir. I wasn't, the entire time I've been with the utilities, it's been Rodifer Moss or Pugh, and we switched from one to the other, like I mentioned earlier, with some of the things that had went on, and trying to have fresh eyes on our financial statements.
How do you, what's your comfort level with Pugh as of today?
I think they're excellent auditors, and I think they do a great job. They have, if I were in their shoes, I would be asking for the same information that they asked me for, and they're very, very good to work with, and they, I've got no complaints with them at this point. Like I said, I think last year was just a struggle because it was, it was the first year, and a lot of the information didn't get turned over to them, for whatever reason.
Are they aware of the consequences of us not being on time this year?
They are, and like I said, that's why they're pushing. I was told today that this week and next week, that's their focus, is to finish up the utility portion.
Want to have any questions from the council?
I think verbal confirmation is fine, but I'm a firm written.
Tina says that while that deadline is, can be considered applicable, it will require, because of the timeline, being at the holiday, that it, for us to be on time and not getting the crosshairs or on the bad side of the comptroller again, that our auditor will have to work through the holidays, that they can make that work, but they will have to work through, but they will have to work through the holidays to get us, keep us on time.
And I will just mention as well, with this letter of credit that we were discussing tonight, what that is, is a zero percent interest loan from the USDA. So if we, part of the requirement, of course, is to get that letter of credit as part of the loan documents and things that we agree to with that. If we don't get that letter of credit, then what, what the utilities would then do is pay that loan off. And to be honest, we have thought about it, but with a zero percent interest loan, we would rather keep that money in our account to draw interest, of course, than tie that money up in something else. But if the wish is for us to pay that off, we can definitely do that also.
Now, I think what the issue is, you know, basically, we'd just like to see a little more cooperation, not only from NU but from Pugh, to make sure that we don't get into a situation like they said that we will be in if we, if this doesn't go in on time. Obviously, you know, if we're having our auditors having to work through the holidays to get this done, we need some more, I guess, better effort from Pugh to get this done so that we don't put, I don't know, just, we're basically putting the onus on someone else that it shouldn't be on. So, James, you have anything else to add?
And those are, you know, the one thing to make clear that we have to deal with is, and Tina may have shared this with you, I'm not sure, I know y'all have a lot of conversations, and Tina's got a lot of respect for you. She says, she gives you high praise to me routinely.
She's been very good to work with.
So I don't want you to feel like we're attacking you, okay? You just happen to be the person that's here tonight that is representing the utility. So please don't take this personally at all.
No, certainly I do not. We need to have these conversations.
Because it is not at all.
No, I understand that.
But the fact of the matter is, you know, we've had a little bit of a strained relationship within NU for a while, especially throughout this deal that's been going on for years that's now been in the rearview mirror. And so a lot of that has left a really bad taste in the comptroller's office. And the comptroller does not blame NU. They don't call and jump on NU. They call and jump on us. I had a very nasty conversation with a member, and the mayor had a similar conversation with a member of the comptroller's staff last year about last year's audit. And when I tried to explain the dynamic of how that we appoint the board members, but the board members run the utility, we don't run the utility, she said, she didn't want to hear it. She said, we own the utility, and we're responsible for the utility, and so we have to answer for it, not the utility. And that's a bold statement, to say that you, we are responsible for the actions of the utility when we don't control it. We have no control whatsoever about what goes on at the utility. It has its own board, and it's autonomous. All we do is appoint the board members and then on occasion approve this kind of thing, a loan, a bond, whatever. So that's why that we had, we had the conversation, the mayor and Tina and I, that we needed to broach this subject tonight, because this is one of the few occasions that we get to address things, because it's rare that NU comes to the city council and needs something. And that's when this is logic works, when we can say, look, you know, we absolutely support you, we want you to succeed, we want to give you the tools you need to succeed, but you gotta, you gotta, you know, throw a dog a bone every once in a while. You know, we cannot get on the bad side of the comptroller again this year. They were very nasty last year, the nastiest I've ever had anybody from the state talk to me, and they didn't, I mean, they just basically, when I was trying to explain to you, she just said, I don't want to hear it. It's your responsibility, you own it. And so they don't want to hear excuses, and they blame us. And what do we do? This is all we can do, is to get in a public forum and put it out there. And so, sorry it had to be you that's here to hear it, but it's a rare occasion that we get an opportunity to address something. And here we started down this path again this year with our auditor. I met with her last, Tina and I met with her last Friday, and we're right back in this same, seems like we're floating down that same river, that it's not going to be on time again this year. And that's just, it's just, it's unacceptable for us to be, keep being put in this situation that is beyond our control. Our audits are always on time, always. And when we're held hostage, and last year it wasn't just NU, it was also the grammar school, but the grammar school's on time this year, but we're still waiting on NU. Now, they've told you they'll have it, you know, like you said, first Friday, it was the thirty-first, now it's backed up to before Christmas, so that's a little better, but it's going to force our auditors to work through the holidays.
Yeah, and I think that, like I said, last year was an anomaly, just because unfortunately, some of the events that led up to that, we thought it was best to start with new auditors, and that is a painful process.
I get that, I mean, I get that, yeah.
It is a very lengthy process to be able to do that. And like I said, I have no complaints with them, they've been very, very thorough in asking things that I would, as an auditor, I would want to see as well. And they did, they did tell me that this week and next week, that is their push to get us final. And I, you know, I hate if it's pushing them to work over the holiday. You know, if I could, if I could change that, I would.
Oh, I know, I understand.
We have, you know, it's, it's kind of the cards we've been dealt, unfortunately, at this point, trying to somewhat get fresh eyes on things.
Sure.
Start fresh with someone, and like I said, they've been, they've been very good to work with. They've, they've worked with us, you know, I think, I think we're building a good relationship with them, and on a good trajectory going forward with them. But like I said, that's the assurance that I got today, is that once that's done.
And that's great, that's great. But what we have here is a unique situation, you know? If it was strictly an issue that what they're doing for you is, that's it, you know, once your audit's done, you're done. But our audit is dependent on what your audit, our audit has to include your audit. So they're going to have to speed up their timeline moving forward. They can't set an absolute deadline, being the last, the possible deadline, and say, we come in under the wire, man, because there's other people that's got to put eyeballs on it for us, and, you know, it holds our audit up if they put, if they give the deadline as the end of the line when they can do it. They can't wait till the absolute last week to turn something in and say, we got it done. Well, they did, but it still leaves us in the lurch, because they've got, they're going to have to accommodate our timeline. I mean, that's just the way it's got to be.
Do you know whether or not, where we fall in on their priority list? I mean, are we one of the smaller municipalities they deal with, or?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I'm not, I'm not certain of that. I do know that they, you know, they're a very reputable firm, and like I said, I know that they've done a great job for us, so I assume they probably have a number of clients because of how I see that they are with us. And I know with changing auditors, typically, they keep you in the same type of rotation. So like if they come out, you know, the last week of October, you're typically on their books around the last week of October. So the fact that we had a brand-new group, we had to get in on the schedule somewhere. Therefore, we're falling in probably around the same time as we were last year. But like I said, as far as the number of audits that they complete and where we are, I know anytime I've called them, they've been available, and they've helped answer any questions that I've had, and they were actually on site for a couple of weeks to do some field work and to go through some things with our group. And like I said, I know myself and my staff have put a lot of hours and effort into getting them everything that they need so that we can have a good, solid audit each year. But I apologize, I don't know the amount and number.
Well, we apologize, it's had to be you, but.
That's okay.
Next time, bring, drag Michael down here or whatever, so we can kind of grill him some, too.
Well, no, I mean, that's where, that's where I live and breathe every day, is in the finance and accounting group, so it definitely leaves me, me is your go-to. So like I said, I, I know we can stay the wrong way, you know, we're in the same boat, I promise you, we all want it, all want it done and wrapped. I don't think anybody will be more tickled to get this done as we will, you know? We've, we've got a lot of questions and pulled a lot of information, so no, by all means, you know, that's what, that's what I'm here for, so if there are questions, by, you know, by all means, let me know, but I will be as transparent as I can with where we are and try to keep communications with Tina so that she knows where we are as well. But like I said, the last information I got today around three o'clock was they want it done before Christmas, so they want us wrapped up and finished by then. And we're to the point, because I've done this a few years at this point, I know we're at that point where it's the last little loose ends that are tying up, so I expect to see some reports over the next few days from them.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, I mean, I.
From the board?
But moving forward, if I recall correctly, we asked Haley Friday, have they heard anything from your auditors, and she said no. So if you could try to get them to coordinate a little better, if at all, with our auditors, to try to learn, at least try to work with our auditors to get them what they need, so they don't get put in a position like they're getting put into this year, last year and this year.
And I did reach out to Haley this afternoon as well. She and I were corresponding about something else, and I did let her know also where we were and what their, what their timeline was. And when I left the office today, I had not heard back from her yet. I'm sure they're in busy season right now, too, but she is aware of that information.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Yeah, the consideration of the letter of credit. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
All right, we have a motion for consideration of the letter of credit for Newport Utilities. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
A nays like sign. Hearing none, thank you, gentlemen. Item E is consideration of parking lot agreement between the city of Newport and Outdoor Ambition LLC Duncan and Greer Series.
You can ask Terry, we had a couple of different drafts of this. They kind of wanted to lease the entire parking lot, and we kind of had to have discussions about what was, what was going to look okay and what wasn't right now. So we kind of came down to we're going to lease them just the space they need to put their dumpster on, because being a restaurant, they got more trash than what we can pick up once a week, so they need space, and downtown, where everything's so dense, there's not a lot, so they're just leasing this amount of space off of us. I don't know if, Terry, if you know of any other agreements we got like this with anybody, this may be a new thing, so, but it looked good to me. Terry said he was okay with. Terry said he was okay with it, and I felt like it just, it lets them put that over there without it just being a gentleman's agreement between us and that group, so that if anybody else comes down the road and wants to do something similar, we do have a baseline for how to do that.
Which lot is it?
The parking lot on Broadway and Woodlawn. It's just, it's a dumpster back in the corner that they've set, they've still gotta do their blind around it. I mean, they've got a construction dumpster, too, where they're working on the...
I started to ask, it's not that big?
No, no, no.
Looks like a transfer trailer.
No, they're, that's where they're working on, the pizza at the Cove spot. That'll be gone once construction's done.
Okay, you've heard consideration. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make the motion. Say.
Okay, we have a motion on board then to approve consideration of parking lot agreement between the city of Newport and Outdoor Ambition LLC Duncan and Greer Series has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And a ayes-like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item F is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2023-17, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
Mayor, that's ordinance number 2023-17, an ordinance amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2023-2024 through Newport Grammar School.
Okay, you've heard the reading. What's the board's pleasure?
Don't worry. It's open. Motion carries.
Second.
Okay, have a motion to approve consideration, first reading of ordinance number 2023-17, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School has been properly seconded. Please indicate your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And a ayes-like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Number 10 is bids, purchases, and expenses, of which apparently there are none for this. We now have the point where we have comments from citizens. Anyone in the audience want, who wish to be heard? Apparently not, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So would move.
We are adjourned.